Do you have an extra agenda? Oh, on the thing? Yeah.
Can't stand it, kinda shit. This morning at 12:30, we got, I tell you, that thing, so flight was really at seven, and they said eight thirty-eight. Finally, it took off around nine. Like nine, like nine forty. Philadelphia. Listen, must say, I love Philly. I love history. So it was like my fifteen-time visiting, but it becomes all of them. But I find something different each time. So this time, they had the actual characters. So me and Ben Franklin got a picture. I didn't get a chance to get the Thomas Jefferson, so when I go back next time, I'm gonna get Thomas Jefferson.
Yep. It was, it was fun. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the Griffin Spalding County School Board of Education Meeting. Today is July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Meeting is starting at six oh six PM. I hope everybody is dry now from the rain. Ask that you please place all electronic communication devices on silent or vibrate. This time, we'll do our roll call. When your district is called, please signify your presence. District one, present. District two, district three, district four, and district five. Alrighty, we have a quorum able to start. Joining us online is Dr. Donald Warren, our interim superintendent. Alright, now we'll do our prayer and pledge allegiance. Our prayer will be led by Leader Holmes, and our pledge will be led by Ms. Weldon.
Lord God, we come right now with bowed head, humbleness in our heart, but most of all, hope and love on our mind. We come, Father God, asking that you would lead, guide, and direct us. And Father God, we pray that we are decent and in order in your eyes. And we ask that we do and make decisions that's best for our students and all of our concerned constituents. And we ask these things knowing that you can and you will. It's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
This time, we'll go to our Griffin Spalding County School System announcements. Mr. Zachary Holmes of the third district.
You, uh, Mr. Chair, my pleasure to present to you the announcement for our July fifteenth regular school board meeting. New High Orientation is July sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth, and it will be held at Griffin High School. Our Back to School Celebration will be Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, at eight AM at Oak Hill Baptist Church. On July twenty-fifth, GSCS Summer School Graduation will be held at ten AM, and I'm assuming it will be at the Griffin Auditorium, if I'm not correct? Is that correct? The location for the summer school isn't on here, but I'm assuming it's gonna be in the auditorium.
Sorry, the auditorium.
Okay. Uh, GSCS Open House for Elementary Schools will be held on Tuesday, July twenty-eighth, from three PM to seven PM. GSCS Open House for Secondary Schools will be held on Wednesday, July twenty-ninth, uh, from three PM to seven PM. And on July thirty-first, oh, happy day, our first day of school, and our GSCS Day One in the District Event will be held in conjunction with that. And last but not least, on Tuesday, August the fifth, our Board of Education Work Session, right here in this room, will be held at four PM. Mr. Chair, that concludes our announcement for the evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Holmes. At this time, we'll go to the adoption of our agenda. Before we adopt our agenda, I would like to make a motion to remove Central Office Assessment Audit under action items. To remove Central Office Assessment Audit. Is there a second? Seconded by the Vice Chair of this Board, Ms. McDonald. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. When your district is called, please vote. District one, yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Item is removed. Alright, now we'll do the adoption of the agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the adoption of this agenda for this meeting? So moved by the Vice Chair of the Board, Ms. McDonald?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Regis of the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote by raising your right hand. Alright, adoption of agenda is approved. Moving on to our recognitions, Ms. Sue McDonald.
Good, good evening, everyone. We will recognize the Georgia DOE Pupil Transportation RISA Director of the Year, Ms. Lindy Pruitt. Thank you, Lindy.
Alright, good evening Chairman Brown and Board members and Dr. Warren joining, joining us. Tonight, I have the honor to recognize our Director of Transportation, Mr. Patrick Martin. We want to congratulate Mr. Patrick Martin, the recipient of the Georgia Association of Pupil Transportation. He was recognized as the Regional Director of the Year Award. This award was voted on by other transportation leaders in the state. Mr. Martin also came in fourth place in the state, voting him in. Mr. Martin is committed to creating a positive work environment with strong culture, and he is dedicated to efficiency in the Transportation Department and always willing to utilize his new ideas, such as the new one he's put out just recently, Ready to Roll Program. So, at this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Patrick Martin, our Director of the Year for the state. Yay!
You gotta give him speech, and then we'll go shake hands, and then go to the step and repeat.
Thank you so much. Uh, it's an honor and a privilege to, to work here. I'll keep it brief. Um, I love what I do. I love who I do it with, and I love who I do it for. So, thank you guys so much.
Definitely appreciate your dedication service, and most importantly, your innovation to move your transportation for, your department forward. This time, we'll have public comments. We have one person that has signed up for public comments. Here are the guidelines for public comments, Board Policy, BCBI. Any individual desiring to speak is requested to give his or her name, address, and the group, if any, that he or she is presenting. The speaker is expected to address the board and not the audience. The presentation should be as brief as possible, yet should include all information considered important by the speaker. Unless an extension of time is granted, each speaker shall not exceed three minutes. Questions, suggestions, proposals, or criticisms that have been presented verbally should also be submitted when practical and writing, and should be signed by the individual or the spokesperson of the group appearing before the board. Persons appearing before the board are reminded, as a point of information, members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Board members will not give remarks or provide comments from speakers. The Board Chair will refer speakers to the superintendent and district staff as necessary for further resolution. No profane and/or vulgar language or personal abuse against any person will be permitted. The Board Chair has the authority to terminate any remarks of individual who does not adhere to the above protocols. Alright, next up, we have William Earnshaw. To the podium.
So I see a three. I wasn't charged for walking across the front of the building here. Uh, Mr. Chairman, or President, or whoever you are. I have lived in Spalding County for thirty-five years. I am a retired bank president. I have thirty-five years of experience in making presentations to Boards of Directors, to regulators, federal and state, and to stockholders, and I generally know what I'm talking about. I've come here tonight with a message that you might receive if you went to the doctor. At least, you should receive this message with the same import and concern that I'm telling it to you tonight. You have terminal cancer in the, in the program that you tragically authorized the sheriff to conduct, known as the safety program with the cameras. I became introduced to this when I got two citations totaling two hundred and fifty dollars for my Jeep that somebody else was driving, which comes to twelve point five percent of my social security rebittance that I will get tomorrow morning. The, my daughter has assisted me in this, and we have done an in-depth study as best we can, with all the obstacles thrown in our way, to understand this program. We finally wrenched out of the sheriff the fact that he has collected five million, eight hundred, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-four cents from this community. That relates to, if you have ninety-five hundred students in this system, that's six hundred and thirteen dollars per student that has gone right down that rat hole. Furthermore, if you want to translate it numerically, each student has incurred five point five citations. Five million, eight hundred, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars, of which the distorted court proceedings have sucked out eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. I was ticketed for a camera on the Jordan Hill Road. As far as I can determine, that camera is not licensed. Now, I can be corrected on that, but neither your agency, this DOT in Georgia, or the sheriff can show me where that is a legal candidate. So, somewhere along the line in the procedures ahead, you're gonna have to refund all the monies for that particular camera in all probability, and more monies probably for other, uh, infractions. There, this system is racked with problems. I'd like to tell you more about it, but that's the, this is the most important subject you are gonna hear tonight, and you're giving it the least time.
Alright.
Could I get your last name again, Mr. William?
So, what, his name is Earnshaw, E-A-R-N-S-H-A-W. Mr. Loki, if you could get his documents that he wants to pass to the board and give them to us? And also, if, Mr. Earnshaw, if you could get with Chief Britt. Chief Britt is our Safety and Security Coordinator, and he can liaison between the sheriff's office and, alright, and then you can also talk to our attorneys in, in that case as well. Thank you so much. Mr. Loki's gonna pass that out for you. Thank you so much, Mr. Earnshaw. Appreciate you. Alright, we are going to go on. No need to take a break. This time, we have our consent agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
It's been properly motioned to approve. Is there a second? Second by Ms. McDonald. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, vote by raising your right hand. Five zero. Alright, action items. Fundraiser request approval for school year twenty-five, twenty-six, Mr. Byron Moneybag Yo. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Griffin Spalding School System is seeking approval from the Board of Education for the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six district fundraiser list. Uh, there was a process created years ago where a solicitation is made for all fundraisers that we plan to do, or have an approved list at the beginning of the year that shared with principals for feedback, et cetera. Uh, in the attached document that you'll see, if you see something in yellow, that is some new items, and if it, if it is new, we have asked principals for feedback, uh, for some explanatory guidance on that. So after that review has been done, uh, we are asking, or it is recommended that GSCS Board of Education approve the proposed list for FY twenty-six.
Heard the report from, uh, Mr. Jones. Is there a motion? Motion? Alright, we have a motion, and we have a second. If, raise your right hand to approve, please. All in favor? Mr. Brown, how will you vote on this? School, okay. Uh, got Mr. Brown's vote. The vote was five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. And next, we have, uh, Dr. Warren, who is, uh, remote tonight. Good evening, Dr. Warren.
Good evening, Board members.
You have the floor, Dr. Warren.
Yes, ma'am. I come to this evening with the recommendation for the executive director of teacher and leader effectiveness. My recommendation is Ms. Tracy Sims. Ms. Sims brings a lot to the table to support our district. Um, thirty-three years of educational experience, ten years as a teacher, three years as an instructional coach, twelve years as a school principal, and for the last eight years, she's been working with Griffin Spalding as the school improvement coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Alright, we've, uh, heard Dr. Warren's recommendation with regard to the teaching and learning position. I believe, is it Tracy? Is the first name Tracy? Okay, just wanted to be sure I was correct. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sims. He has recommended Ms. Tracy Sims. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed?
Any extensions? Alrighty, the motion carries.
Alright, four zero. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sims.
Ms. Sims, would you like to address the board? Podium?
Yeah. I just wanna thank you for this opportunity. I love this district. Um, I have poured my soul into this for the last eight years, working for our teachers and our kids to do better, and I'm super excited about this opportunity and what we can do together. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to you again. Alright, now we'll have our presentations and discussions. Up next is Ms. Haley from our school nutrition program. I just wanna tell the board, like, you guys are gonna be, if you have not looked at the updates on our website and what nutrition has done as it relates to letting parents, letting families know what's going on in the food and all that, you're gonna be in for a really good treat. And so, it's good to have, uh, Mr. Wheeler and Ms. Haley to give us information.
Okay. Um, good afternoon, Dr. Um, Dr. Warren Superintendent, Chairman Brown, and Board members. My name is Ivoryanne Haley. I am the Nutrition and Wellness Coordinator here for Griffin Spalding, and this evening, I will be presenting on Meal Viewer and School Year Twenty-Five Nutrition Program data. But before we get started going over our non-negotiables, we're charged to be professional, be accountable, and communicate effectively. And our focus areas are literacy, enrollment, attendance, discipline, and solving. Our mission and vision is to build distinctive brands, build strong leaders, have great schools, and our mission is to empower each student to graduate college and career-ready. Our roadmap to success, we have three tiers, leadership, teaching, and learning. For the sake of this presentation, it will fall under the learning tier, specifically family and community engagement. So, what is Meal Viewer, and what are the functions of Meal Viewer? So Meal Viewer is an interactive menu viewing platform, and it's designed to enhance the school meal experience, provide access to school menus in advance, and provide students, parents, and staff with real-time access to our school menus, nutrition information, and allergen alerts. This is a tremendous platform for our families because it helps students make informed food choices and allow parents and caregivers to stay informed about their students' dietary intake. So I'm just gonna show you quickly how Meal Viewer works. You can find this link under the GSCS website in the Nutrition Department. And once you click this link, it will bring up all the schools here in Griffin Spalding County. And for the sake of this presentation, I'm going to select Ann Street as a school, and I'm gonna go back to our main menu since that was the last time we were in school. And I'll select lunch, and you can hover over each item, and it will show you the breakdown of the nutrition information. So it'll tell you how much calories, fat, sodium is in the food item. And in case the student has an allergen, you can click on this allergen tab, and for presentation-wise, I'll just select peanuts and eggs, since that's a common allergen, and it will block out all of those items that includes those ingredients. And if, if any parent wants to print this off, they can just select the print button and select their allergens again. I'll select eggs and peanuts, and they can print this off. That way, students and parents can stay informed about, um, the specific items that they can receive once they go through the serving line. So again, this is a way for parents and students to collaborate in case there are any special dietary needs. Yes, and... Moving on to School Year Twenty-Five Nutrition Program data. So the number of days that we serve meals this year were a hundred and seventy due to inclement weather. The number of breakfast meals served were seven hundred seventy-seven, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-five. Breakfast participation for School Year Twenty-Five was fifty-three point forty-five percent. The number of lunches we served this year were one million, one hundred eighty thousand, four hundred and five, and lunch participation for School Year Twenty-Five was eighty-one point twelve percent. The state average in Georgia is about forty percent for breakfast and sixty percent for lunch. So as you can see here, we are exceeding, um, the state average here in Griffin Spalding for lunch participation and breakfast participation. And in regards to our staffing, we are staffed, eighty-six kitchen staff of the needed, a hundred and five percent, so we are eighty-one point ninety percent. We are working with SPUR to staff more employees, and if anyone is interested, they can go on the SPUR website where we, um, they can apply to become a part of our nutrition staff. We also have an attendance rate of ninety-four percent for employees, so this shows high employee dedication. And as you can see here, our staff is excited and ready to show up and go to work for the students.
Alright.
Any questions?
Alright, Board members, do we have any questions for Ms. Haley? Alright, Ms. McDonald, you're recognized.
I still got my teacher voice. You never lose that. Ms. Haley, thank you so much. That's so great. And, um, I, I, I'm really intrigued with this. So, has, has the rabbit foot been on employees of the school when they fix breakfast and lunches for students who have allergies? And now that will, that rabbit will, won't be on the, the shoulders of our employees? Or do kids come through the line these days and know what they're allergic to? I mean, I saw the dinner roll was struck through with eggs and, uh, what else? Eggs and something else?
Yeah, we, uh, eggs. I marked off eggs and peanut butter.
Right.
But of course, it has eggs, wheat, um, because it's whole grain. But it will take everyone's collaboration. Some students do know when they come through the line, the items that they shouldn't pick up, but it's gonna take collaboration from the parents, just being able to have this tool to go online.
This is the end of my year number five here. So every year, we, uh, have until September thirtieth to kind of close out our financials. We have three months after the end of the year to transmit some Department of Education information. So my goal is to give you the first blush now. We typically do not come back in here and give you multiple versions. We'll just, if, if the fund balance will be where it plays out, if there's some, uh, positive or negative in that, I'll keep you up to date, updated on that, though. So at this point in time, we're looking at about forty-three point six million in fund balance for the general fund. Nutrition is at about three point nine million. The general fund itself had about fifteen point four million in revenue in June on sixteen point one million in spending, so there's a lot of entries that we book in June. The primary entry is, um, salaries that we are accruing for teachers that are off-contract that we have to pull that back into the prior year, so you'll always see those in, in the month of June. So we have actually moved to about a two-million-dollar usage of fund balance at this point. So as a reminder, you did a budget amendment last month up to four point seven-five million, so we're still under that at this point. Special revenues, your revenues again at the top, on your expenses at the bottom. Most of those, uh, figures at the very bottom are zero because we've accrued those receivables that are still to come in. On the nutrition side, about eight point three million in revenue, uh, seven point nine in expense, so the, uh, operating at the, the year is about three hundred and fifty to the good. Again, nutrition also has to accrue salaries at year-end, has very little revenue coming in in June, but still has those salaries, uh, so that balance comes back in where he's had a higher, uh, fund balance earlier in the year. On our investment side, we're still, uh, holding, uh, funds at four point three seven percent, which is still really good. We're managing about a hundred and thirteen million dollars. Uh, most of that is our investments at the state pool for our general fund, and then about forty-five point five that we still have on our, our bond that we, uh, passed last year. And Sploshed with one more month to go in the year, uh, about thirteen point three million total so far, one point two million dollar a month in June, uh, May. Uh, so we should finish up around fourteen and a half million. Uh, so if you take that times the five-year cycle, it should be somewhere around seventy-five million, um, give or take. We, hopefully, there's gonna be some growth on that, um, as we go through the, the remaining years. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. Board members, are there any questions for Mr. Jones as it relates to this financial report? Alright, hearing none. Thank you so much. Next, uh, we all receive our information items that were in our packets. Uh, this time, we'll move to our governance team comments. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Holmes. Ms. Register? Ms. McDonald?
No, sir.
None for me. Ms. Weldon? Alright, we do have executive session, so I need a motion to go into executive session, and we are going into executive session for the following reasons. Uh, reason one is to, uh, discuss and deliberate upon the appointment of employment and personnel, and to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation. What is the pleasure of this body to come, to go into executive session?
Summit.
It's been properly moved by, uh, Ms. McDonald, seconded by Ms. Weldon. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, vote by raising your right hand. Alright, five-zero, the board is in executive session.